Welcome to the Thursday, October 24th, 2024, meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. Will the Secretary please take the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Klopp?
Here.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Nating?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Chair Strongman?
Here.
And moving on to our consent calendar, we have three items on the consent calendar. Would somebody want to discuss any of those items or make a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Will the Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to public communications, this is the time of the meeting where anyone, member of the public is welcome to speak to us on any subject they want. As other, we would like to reserve that you not speak anything on the agenda, but anything else, you're welcome to come forward and speak to us. Seeing nobody racing to the podium, we will close public communications and move on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is, oh, first of all, disclosures of experte communications. Any experte communications we've had? I have to confess that I met the, one of the owners of the Lunacy Lounge just before the meeting, and that's my one thing. Our first item is Original Joe's conditional use permit for alcohol sales. And we'll have a presentation by staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Senior Planner with the City, and we are here tonight to consider the conditional use permit for original, for the proposed Original Joe's restaurant that will operate at 1300 South Main Street. The use permit, permit is to serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. The applicant Jared Taylor and his team are here tonight representing the project to answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. And just to quickly orient you with the site, Original Joe's will be located at the corner of South Main Street and Broadway Plaza Street. The space was formerly occupied by Stanford's Restaurant. It has been vacant since 2019. Original Joe's will open in the summer of 2025. It is currently under construction, or the construction activity will begin soon as all the permits have been approved. And the surrounding area does consist of a mix of commercial uses, and there is the mixed-use Agora development across the way. The site is zone plan development, which does allow restaurant uses by right. A conditional use permit is required to serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. at eating and drinking establishments. And just to quickly go over some background, on July 12th of 2024, the city did approve an AUP to allow the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol till 11:00 p.m. seven days a week. After submitting this application, the applicant did realize that their business operating plan and the way their restaurant operates at other locations actually requires for them to stay open longer, so they wanted to serve alcohol past 11:00. And again, for background purposes, last year, the Design Review Commission did approve a design review, which did include a 1,650 square foot second-floor kitchen addition to the existing building on-site, new color scheme, updated window and door openings, new outdoor dining area that will be overlooking South Main Street, and new landscaping and signage as well. And the Original Joe's is a full-service restaurant and bar that will operate under a type 47 alcohol business license. The hours of operation proposed are 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. seven days a week. The alcohol will be served in the restaurant and in the three outdoor dining areas. I will share a floor plan that shows all of those areas shortly. The outdoor dining space will be enclosed with gates to ensure that the alcohol stays on the premises. And under this conditional use permit, the applicant is requesting that they are able to serve the sales and service of alcohol till 12:30 a.m. daily. So that is a 30-minute last call with alcohol consumption ending at 1:00 a.m. daily. And with the security measures, they do have training and certification that will be required of all employees under the RBS program that is administered, administered by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. And the managers will be on-site to monitor the safe operations of the alcohol use. And signs will be placed indicating last call for alcohol at 12:30. And security measures also include security cameras that are installed in the inside and outside of the restaurant. And here is the detailed floor plan that does show the interior space and the two outdoor dining areas that will be open to the public. One is at the top that's overlooking South Main Street. That is what was like a new portion of Original Joe's, which Stanford's Restaurant didn't have initially because the access to Stanford's Restaurant was from that elevation. So that is something new that they've incorporated into their design, and that was approved. The other one is the closest to Broadway Plaza Street. That's, again, available to the public. They do have a third outdoor dining area. Oh. There it is. Yeah. So that third outdoor dining area is reserved for private reservation dining only. And just a quick look at the second floor plan. This is what was approved with the design review approval. Again, it's just for kitchen operations only with a second-story addition. And here are the conditional use permits that permit findings that are required in order to approve the use permit tonight. The project does comply with all of these findings as Original Joe's will be located in a vacant space that was formerly occupied by a similar restaurant use. And Original Joe's will be compatible with the surrounding uses, which does include several restaurants, commercial uses, and retail stores. And the proposed business operations and hours are unlikely to have any negative impacts on the surrounding uses as, and it would also enhance the area as it's utilizing an existing tenant space that's been vacant since 2019. And here are additional findings for the Planning Commission's consideration for alcohol use permits that do need to be made in order to approve this project. The Walnut Creek Police Department did review this project, and they didn't have any concerns regarding the request for extended alcohol service at this location as it's considered a low-crime area, and there are similar uses in the nearby area. And the business will follow all of the business practices. They also have security measures in place and will comply with all of the conditions of approval that are outlined in Attachment 1 of your packet tonight. So based on all of this information, staff does believe that the proposed use does meet all of these findings. And staff does recommend that the Planning Commission move to adopt the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow alcohol sales and service until 12:30 a.m. and alcohol consumption till 1:00 a.m. daily at the Original Joe's Restaurant. And just for the record, I also wanted to point out that the draft resolution, Attachment 1, has been modified to, to basically clarify conditions number 16 and 17, and those have been highlighted in red. I can read them out for the record, but condition number 16 should read "No person under the minimum age as enforced by the State of California ABC licensed shall sell or deliver alcohol beverages." That's really just to clarify that tomorrow down the line, ABC for the type 47 license does change the age bracket. We just don't want them to be restrictive to that age because then they would have to come back and modify the use permit. So we basically said as long as it's in compliance with the ABC license, which is the type 47. And then the second one is "No sales of alcohol beverages shall be allowed to consumers," which is not permitted, again, by that type 47 State of California ABC license. Because when it says, the original condition has said "No retail sales of alcohol beverages", that could be confused with, they're going to have to-go orders. If somebody wants to get a to-go order and the host does pack a drink to-go, we don't want that to sound like it's a retail sale. So this way, that is allowed. The to-go orders, even alcohol included, is allowed under the type 47 alcohol license. So I just wanted to clarify both of those conditions. And that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. First question, when we, assuming we approve this as we approve the amended article here.
That's correct.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none right now. We will now open for public comments, and the applicant is free to come up and make a statement.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jared Taylor here on behalf of Original Joe's. I'd like to start with thanking staff. Thank you for your time from this project and this application and the multiple applications that we've had on this project. We have also met with Walnut Creek Police Department. We have their support for the project as well, which we're happy to report as indicated by staff. We hope that some of you are familiar perhaps with Original Joe's existing operating locations in the San Francisco area. This is the same family-run business. This is not a franchisee. This is the same family operation, full-service, sit-down, dine-in restaurant with the sale of a full line of alcoholic beverages for on-site consumption. As staff indicated, under the type 47 license, beer and wine is allowed to be sold for off-site consumption. As many of you may be aware, since COVID, takeout sales is a huge part of restaurant businesses. It's a critical part of restaurant businesses. People want that convenience in our fast lifestyle to be able to order food items and at the same stop pick up beer or wine to-go as well. Original Joe's will have an extensive indoor dining area as well as three patios, as indicated by staff, one being the... Oh, thank you so much. I didn't even look up there. Thank you. Including the, the private dining room patio. The full menu of Original Joe's is open at all times the restaurant is open. As I said before, Original Joe's is really a seasoned operator with many years of operation here in the Bay Area, proposing to bring to Walnut Creek Walnut Creek's own Original Joe's. What else? As indicated, we do have the AUP approval, which allows alcohol sales until 11:00 p.m. And Original Joe's really requests the ability to serve to a couple that goes out to a late-night movie and wants to have a dessert and a drink afterwards, or a family, or a business meeting that runs a little later. When dining at Original Joe's, it can be a multi-course meal. This is an enjoyable time. This is not something rushed. It takes time, and we need to have these later hours so that people have the opportunity to, to enjoy and finish and consume their food and drink items. As, as indicated, the last seating will be at 11:00 p.m., last call at 12:30, and the last time that a drink can be consumed by a customer at 1:00 a.m. And we, we hope that you can see this request as reasonable, especially in our modern times. As I described, this is not a restaurant that morphs into a nightclub at night. This is a family dining establishment and will continue to be so now and for years to come. So we've reviewed the proposed, as amended, conditions of approval. Thank you again, staff and Police Department for working with us on those amendments. We're ready to accept those conditions of approval here tonight. I'd like to point out that tonight we have with us in support is Shelley Dress, Broadway Plaza General Manager, as well as Scott Shuttlesworth, Chief Operating Officer of Original Joe's, and Ken Hanson, Director of Operations of Original Joe's. And, you know, I didn't do a great job going through my slides. I apologize. I'll just move on here. The, are the building elevations, as indicated, approved through design review. Original Joe's is under construction now, looking forward to opening and serving the Walnut Creek community. And I'd like to turn it over to Scott Shuttlesworth to kind of talk a little bit more about the operation, the brand from here.
Thank you, Jared. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I appreciate everybody's effort and the staff as well. Thank you very much. Again, we're, I'm here on behalf of the Dugan family that's owned Original Joe's and operated it for the last coming up on 88 years. The third-generation brother and sister are now the owners, operators, and the driving force of our restaurant and our brand. And we take great pride in representing them, Ken and I do, being here, as well as what we do on a daily basis with our incredible team. We have some of our team members that have been with us 40 years. So we are a really good family-run restaurant, multi-generational, and there just aren't a lot of those anymore. But we're also really good at what we do, really good at taking care of the guests, taking care of the team, which you'll see is in our presentation, and making sure that we're great stewards to the community and available for people for having a great dining experience. With that, I'll move, I'll do better than you, Jared, and try and move along with this. This is more not really as a humble brag, but more about trying to show that Bay Area media, national media, that we've been around a long time. We've been heavily vetted, and we do a really great job of representing ourselves, our brand, our sequence of service, our attention of detail, how we take care of the facility, take care of the guests, and take care of the team, all kind of shows in the awards and accolades and the kind comments from the national media. And we do appreciate that. And I think you can see from some of those highlights we could have put forth that we've been around a while, and so, and we plan on being around a little longer. In that, just some additional articles that we wanted to call out just for your knowledge and background. If you aren't familiar with us or our brand, again, there's the, the, the second and third generations represented there with the parents and their two kids, John and Elena. We also, and, and a talk about, John does right there in his quote on the right about "We take great care of the guests, great care of the team." So that means in the facility, in our uniform standards, with our cleanliness of the facility, the indoor, the outdoor, with our greeting of the guests, the way we take care of people, it just shows and resonates in our DNA with hospitality. And we're really looking forward to this location. Families had requests to come to the Bay Area for decades, and we found, we think, the perfect location. Other articles you'll see there, talk about, and this one we kind of thought resonates with us. We, we draw a lot of guests. We feel we've earned that over the decades. So we run busy restaurants that are full, usually from the time we open to the time we close. People have different dining habits, different dining hours. Some come depending on their jobs, around different work hours, they're doctors, et cetera, nurses, swing shifts, et cetera. We take pride in serving everyone. This one you can see just in the article, well, well, half past, you know, half-full at past 10 o'clock. That's really who we are. People like our environment. We stay the environment. To kind of piggyback on something Jared said, we don't morph into anything. The booths are custom. They don't move. The bar has banquets. They don't move. So we can't morph into anything. We stay true to who we are. That's who we've been and who we will be. Additional articles talk about, you know, the level of cuisine, you know, how we, we really are a restaurant that takes great care of guests tableside, takes great care of representing the community, the events that we have, the people that will show up. We're really excited about the private room for those that can be anything from a sixth-grade graduation to a celebratory dinner, to somebody's promotion, to somebody's retirement, to somebody's acquisition. Those are great reasons to have something really nice in the Bay Area and really nice-centered in Walnut Creek that we think will be one of the most desired special event or private rooms in, in, in the East Bay. And that really is my, my finite part of the presentation, just to make sure that I was here, was available as the COO of Original Joe's and to answer any questions or any technical aspects that you may have for why we're super excited to be coming to Walnut Creek and can't wait to beat the deadline that you said, Smar, of summer. Our goal is really much closer to March, April, and be ready to go in the spring if not sooner. Hold me to the March. That's my goal and my personal goal. Any questions or anything I can do?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Any questions for the applicants?
You actually answered my question, "Why summer?" So I think we're going to shoot for spring.
Yeah. That is absolutely our goal, Commissioner. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Yeah. Commissioner Anderson?
When I mentioned to my wife that they'd finally found someone to move into the old Stanford's location, her response was, "Oh, yes, it's Original Joe's. So you have at least one fan in Walnut Creek."
Thank you. We hope to replicate a few more, but we'll start with one. Nice, Jared. We'll start with one.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a quick question. The, you mentioned other locations in the area. What, what other city?
We have a, 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 original, full-size Original Joe's in North Beach, a full-size Original Joe's in Westlake and Daly City. We have a, one that we launched in 2020, December of 2020, a to-go-only model of Little Original Joe's with some of the best-of-Joe's and pizza, rotisserie chicken, all in a to-go environment in West Portal in the city by St. Francis Woods area. We then opened a Mexican restaurant called Elena's for a lot of family reasons and purposes, and that is opened in West Portal as well, and we opened that in February. And then a mere 90 days later, we opened Little Original Joe's the, the way it was meant to be originally with about 100 seats in the Marina District on Chestnut Street. And so we are running five very busy restaurants that do a great job in their different neighborhoods and districts with the regulars, with the locals, representing the brand, and their different tweaks, all of which are surrounded by communities and residents.
So is the, are the security processes and measures you're taking in this restaurant similar to the ones you've had in the others?
Correct. Yes, sir. We have very rigorous training with our team, RSB with everybody for Responsible Serve Safe. Ken Hanson does a great job as our Director of Operations, making sure that all of our systems, all of our processes, all of our procedures, including our training of our team, our management, and our staff is rigorous. We have cameras indoor and out at all of our facilities, and we do a really good job of controlling the environment and taking care of the guests to make sure they have a great dining experience and return to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just had a comment. Being a native San Franciscan, growing up eating at Original Joe's, I'm very happy to see you coming to Walnut Creek, and I appreciate all the work that you've put in, and particularly the security plan. It's something that we care a lot about and look at in great detail. So thank you for the work.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are, we are very proud of how we run them and how we keep them precision. Compliments to our team.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
And any other member of the public would like to comment on this item? You're welcome to come up and talk to us. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commissioners for comments or possibly a motion. Oh, Commissioner Ward?
Well, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for the very good presentation from staff. It was very helpful. And I also really appreciated the professionalism and completeness of the information that was provided by the applicant, particularly the security plan. That's what we care about today. But I was really excited to see you coming into this spot. I, I, I go to the Lifetime Fitness every day pretty much and have been watching to see what's going on there. And for a long time, I was like, "Well, maybe you should put some pickleball courts in there because it looks kind of blighted and, you know, not so great." But then when I found out Original Joe's was going in, I was really, really excited because I think that's fitting a need in our community for this type of restaurant that we totally need downtown, and I think this is going to be really great. But mostly, I, like I said, I appreciate the professionalism of the, the, the report, and I'm really looking forward to you opening. So I'm glad it's March. March is better than, than summer. Or I don't know. You said it here now. So we're... So hopefully, we can, we can get that done, and we'll look forward to dining on your outdoor patios and really enjoying some good food. So, thank you.
Other comments or a motion?
There's no more than I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as amended on the items that we have before us for conditional use permit number Y24-064, Original Joe's Restaurant, hours for alcohol sales, service, and consumption.
I'll second.
Will the Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to the next project, which is the Lunacy Lounge Conditional Use Permit for Alcohol Sales and Service Past 11:00 p.m. We'll now have a staff report.
Back again. Simmer Gill with the City. We have another similar conditional use permit alcohol request to serve alcohol sales and service past 11:00 p.m. And this is for Luna Sea Lounge that is located at 121 Pringle Avenue. The applicant Devon Weck, representing the project, is here tonight, as am I, to answer any questions that you may have after this presentation. And just to quickly orient you with the site, this is a existing 1,145-square-foot restaurant that is located on the ground floor of the Wave Mark Mixed Use Building. In this photo, as you can see, the three upper floors are residential uses, and the surrounding area is, does consist of a mix of commercial uses. This property, this entire development is zone plan development, where commercial uses are permitted on the ground floor, and a conditional use permit to serve alcohol on or past 11:00 p.m. at this location does require a conditional use permit. And here's some background. On July 28th of 2022, the Planning Commission did approve a administrative use permit to allow the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol until 11:00 p.m. seven days a week at this location. And the reason the Planning Commission looked at the AUP is because the Transit Village Mixed Use Development, Plan Development Zone requires a Planning Commission approval for both an AUP and a CUP at this location. And I think that's probably because of the proximity to the residential uses above. And so currently, Lunacy Lounge operates under a type 48 alcohol business license, and they do offer a variety of cocktails and appetizers. Current hours of operation are 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. six days a week. They are closed on Mondays. And the proposal before you tonight is a 12:30 a.m. end time for sales and service of alcohol, again, with that 30-minute last call, with consumption ending at 1:00 a.m. Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. So in this case, they're only asking for three days to serve alcohol past 11:00 p.m. Alcohol service is also proposed in the outdoor seating area from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on all other business operating days. The outdoor area will be enclosed with a three-foot-tall barrier, and we'll go more into detail over that shortly. Again, security measures for this use permit, in particular, again, all employees will have training and certification under the RBS program, administrator, administered by California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. And they do have a door manager on-site and security cameras installed to monitor the safe operations of the business and the alcohol use. And here is the floor plan that does show the interior and exterior areas where alcohol is, the dining and alcohol is proposed. The indoor, as you can see here, the indoor dining area is 800 square feet, and the outdoor dining area will be just right outside the entrance doors. It's about 175 square feet in size. And here's a more detailed look at this outdoor area, which does consist of four tables and 16 chairs. All tables and chairs will be moved inside at closing every day, and the area will be enclosed with a three-foot-tall portable barrier to prevent alcohol from being taken off the premises. And a rendering of that is provided here. And the enclosure and seating arrange, will arrangement will ensure that the sidewalk and pedestrian access does remain unobstructed and will allow customer access to the lounge. And again, there are three findings that the Planning Commission needs to make in order to approve a conditional use permit. And this project does comply with all of the use permit findings as the lounge is compatible with the surrounding uses, which does include a mix of restaurants and commercial uses. And there are security cameras that are installed on-site with a door manager ensuring that all patrons are at least 21 years in age. And no live entertainment is proposed at this location. And I believe it's also not, it's not prohibited, but I believe it's not allowed other than... allowed, other than just music inside the restaurant. And given the proximity to the residential uses, alcohol service in the outdoor seating area will be limited to 8:00 PM daily to avoid any disruptions to the residential properties above. And the proposed business operations and the hours will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and will not result in any negative impacts to the surrounding uses. And lastly, here are the additional alcohol findings that need to be made in order to approve the conditional use permit tonight. The Walnut Creek Police Department does support the extended alcohol service hours at this location, as there have been no reported calls for service, and the lounge has been operating successfully for over a year under the administrative use permit. And additionally, the business will follow all of the business practices, have security measures in place, and will comply with all of the conditions of the draft resolution, that's included as attachment one of your packet. And with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit to allow the alcohol sales and service until 12:30 AM and consumption until 1:00 AM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays, and then also allow alcohol sale, service, and consumption till 8:00 PM in the outdoor seating area on all business, on all other business operating days. And then, of course, the alcohol sale, service, and consumption for the remaining days, which isn't under your discretion tonight, but they will continue to seize at 11:00 PM. And that is all I have for my presentation, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yep.
Hypothetical, I guess, the, since there's no half-hour gap between the end of sales and the end of consumption in the outdoor dining area. If I buy a drink at five minutes to eight, and I haven't finished it by 7:59, I can't leave the area because there's a barrier there to prevent that. So, at 8:00, I've still got most of my drink left, do I just take it inside?
So, I will let the applicant elaborate on that, but I believe that's the intent, that, of course, you're gonna welcome them back inside the restaurant, or maybe give them a few minutes to wrap up, so could clean up the space and move everything inside.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes.
Is the seating, outdoor seating included as part of our approval?
The outdoor seating is subject to the city's outdoor dining program, so that will be approved separately. What you're approving tonight is to allow the alcohol, yeah, in the outdoor dining area.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was my question as well. So, currently, they don't have the outdoor seating?
That's correct, and so what?
So, they'll apply under the?
Exactly, yeah, because I think when you approved the AUP a year back, it didn't include an outdoor area, so alcohol service is not currently allowed in the outdoor area.
Question from myself, let's see, and no others. Has the Walnut Creek Police Department seen any problems with this establishment?
With this establishment? No, there have been no reported calls from my conversation with the Walnut Creek Police Department. We do have the officer here tonight, in case you have additional questions related to...
Do they see any, foresee any potential problems?
Good question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that to the officer.
Good evening, Commissioners, Lieutenant Drew Olson with the Walnut Creek Police Department. Our calls for, we have zero calls for service for the establishment, we have, I think that address has one call for service for a vehicle burglary or something like that, that has nothing to do with the business, so it's hard to, I mean, you can't foresee what's gonna happen at any alcohol establishment, but the fact that they're open till 11:00 PM now, and we have zero calls for service in a year, I would say, is a good sign for the way they're operating, so, I mean, that's the best I can say.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we will now open the public hearing and start with the applicant, if you'd like to make a statement.
Good evening, Council, my name is Devin, I'm one of the owners of Lunacy Lounge, and it's a very craft little space, it's not that big, it's only about 1,100 square feet, but we focus on craft cocktails that we do, from everything from fresh squeezing the juices and unique different blends of cocktails, so it's more of a lounge area, it has nothing to do with loud music. We put theatrical soundproofing in the ceiling, so that way it doesn't bother any tenants above us, so that way we know that, and we want to make sure that nobody above us is being annoyed by us, and the music is never gonna be too loud, because you want it to be an area where people can come, relax, have their conversations with their friends, or, it turns out to be more of a couples' date scene, what's been happening with it. So, it's very, it's very tranquil place, very candlelit, stuff like that, so, that's our goal in this place, is nothing to be loud or anything like that, that's very, we're very passionate with our drinks, we're very passionate with our employees, and we just want to make it a very quiet, nice environment, and at 10:30 is when, like 9:00 is when people are done with dinners in town, and then that's when they're kind of headed to this place. So, I just feel bad when we had to, like, kick everybody out at 10:30 and do the last call, that's why this 12:30 is perfect. We never wanted to be a 2:00 AM bar, nobody like, this is, stuff happens, nobody wants to know what's going on at 2:00 AM bars, they're crazy, so we just wanted to have just a couple extra hours so that people can enjoy their drinks and have a little bit more fun in there. So, that's really our only goal.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Anderson.
I'd like to give you a chance to address the 8:00 question. What happens with the two-thirds of a beer you've got in your hand at 8:00?
Oh, but we're letting everybody know, we have these little A-frame signs that are on the tables that says, like, "Nothing happens after 7:30 for outside seating," and if they still want to continue drinking, we just have to bring them back inside as we break down the outside. So, the servers know, the bartenders know, and everybody's, like, letting everybody know half an hour in advance, being like, "We gotta break it down, sorry, guys."
I was trying to figure out what "C" was involved in the Lunacy.
I know, right? It's a play-on word, so it's just, it's Lunacy and then C, but everybody, oh, man, it's like...
But when people speak it too quickly, it sounds like you're trying to attract Lunacy.
You should see what happens to me when I'm giving my email address to people. They're like, "Oh, it's Lunacy got this," and they're like, "Okay," and I'm like, "No, no, 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 it's Lunacy, S-E-A," and so, it's, it was funny at the beginning, but now, like, for conversations and emails and business-wise, it's like, it's always like, I almost have to have two email addresses now.
Okay.
If I spell it correctly.
Any other questions for, yeah, Commissioner Ward.
So, thank you for this, I'm sure, it's nice that you've created this space that people can gather, you know, by the bart station with the new, the new building and the like, so I'm glad it's going well for everybody. I know that when you were here before, you had a, you know, a limited menu, it's not a dinner place, or it's really, so is that still the case with what you're serving?
It's okay, we're working with, like, different kind of food trucks and different kind of pop-ups for food that's inside there, because my kitchen's very limited, so we can't really do too much stuff with food stuff.
Right.
And then that's like, I'm, it's knowing what's been going on with the trend of everything in this bar, it's been, everybody goes out and has dinner in town, and then they come back to Lunacy for their, for their evening nightcap, so...
Maybe need some more desserts in there or something.
Oh, my God, wouldn't that be nice? I know, people have been talking about that, and I was like, that's, I mean, I'm not into sweets myself, but I mean, now I'm thinking about, like, little, little fun sweets would be the dinner spot, like, the little, little...
I think, I think that could be a winner for you.
I think so, definitely.
But you serve, the whole time you're open and serving alcohol, you serve food as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
There's never a time when it's only?
No, 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 we always do it, yeah.
And the door manager that you're referring to, that's the only security that you have? That's your security person?
Yeah.
But it's a small place, and there's not a lot of entrances, so it's not a big deal.
Forty people, you know?
You don't need a big squad.
I know, right? Yeah, we have to have walkie-talkies and everything, the guy in the back, and...
Seems like that might be a lot, but...
We've never had incidents in there, everybody, our, luckily, our whole clientele's been very quiet, and, I mean, we don't have music blasting, there's nobody dancing in there going crazy, it's more of just a chill vibe, so it's all candlelit at night.
Nice.
Nobody wants anything loud, and on top of that, I got tenants above me and stuff like that, so we keep it super cool.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, too, how you're managing noise, and if you have people later who get a little more festive, you know, what you're gonna do with that.
Definitely not, the tenants above me have my cell phone number, so, like, there's been a few times where people were outside, like chatting and having a fun time and doing that stuff, and when they're outside, the voice echoes a lot, so that's when they'll call me or something like that, and then I'll be like, "You guys gotta go," or "Go back inside," you know, so, that's been, that was the only, that only happened once.
Yeah.
You know, it's just weird, like, the soundproofing is so interesting, it's just, like, when you're inside, it's nothing, but you go outside and people chat, it goes upstairs.
Yeah, I could see that, but you've gone out of your way to establish a relationship with the...
Hell, yeah, they all have my cell phone number. They have, they have no problem being like, "Hey!"
Well, I mean, that's good.
I know, but it's only happened one time, so it's good, and the people living upstairs are fine. I live in the building too now, I didn't want to, but...
You just never leave, huh?
I know, right? It's like, I haven't seen the sun in a while, it's good.
Okay, so I did have a question, I mean, your plan says that most of your sales are made between the hours of 9:00 and 11:00.
True.
And that you think staying later would increase sales, but if that's when your sales are happening, do you think you really need, I mean, how much more are you gonna sell between, for these later hours?
I don't know yet, I mean, honestly, because we, at 10:30, when we do the last call, we turn the lights on, turn the music off, and let everybody know they have a half an hour to finish their drinks, but at these past, like, Thursday, Fridays, or, no, Fridays and Saturdays recently, they've just been full, and I just feel bad telling everybody to go.
So, you think there's plenty of people around that would be interested in staying a little later?
I think so, you know, I think so, I think there's, I think there's a good amount, like I said, our capacity's like 40, 50 people, you know, so we don't, we don't need a lot, it's not like, nobody's in there going crazy dancing, but I just feel bad that the people that are in there are getting in their little groove and having a fun time relaxing, and then he's like, "Okay, you gotta go." So, that extra couple hours would just change everything for us, especially for the patrons.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you offering, like, a craft mocktail menu as well?
Yeah, oh, my God, we have a great craft mocktail menu right now, something like, because we juice everything in-house, so, I mean, even our carrot juice, we juice in-house, I buy 50 pounds of carrots a week, and everyone's like, "What are you doing with all these carrots? You got a horse?" I'm like, "Nah, I got a bar," you know, like, who uses carrot juice at a bar? But we do some amazing craft cocktails with carrot juice, which is insane, with a little bit of fresh ginger juice that we juice inside, too, so everything's in there, the bartenders hate it, but people love it, yeah.
Sounds amazing to me. Okay, well, thank you for all that, I appreciate it.
Cheers, guys.
Appreciate it very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll open it for Public Communications, anybody, member of the public, likely to come forward and comment on this item, you're welcome to do so. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for comments or a motion.
I'll move adoption of the resolution in attachment one, number Y-24-065.
Second. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to Commission considerations, do we have any considerations?
None at this time.
And moving on now to Commission member and staff reports and announcements, at this point, we need to select, nominate a Planning Commissioner to serve on transpact that will be referred to the City Council for approval. First off, do we have any volunteers? We have one volunteer, okay. We now need an official nomination, and, second.
I'll nominate Commissioner Klopp for the position.
I will second that.
Okay.
And thank Commissioner Klopp.
Yes. We'll thank her. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Do I vote?
Vote for yourself?
Yes, okay.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.